Okay, call this regular council meeting, January 28th, 2020, to order. A clerk call the roll.
Halter.
Here.
Hermes.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Metz.
Here.
Osmanoglu.
Here.
Walther.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here. Okay, we've got a prayer by Maria Walther.
Dear Lord, let us pray for peace in the world this new year, and this is our official opening meeting of council. Let's pray for people who stands for truth and that which is right. Please give your blessings to our veterans and their families, those veterans and families who have given so much for our freedom. Let us pray here in Green Hills for all the families who have lost a dear one during the holidays, and for our wonderful volunteer fire department and police force while they are going out on a call, let them be safe and come back to us. We should also remember all of those who have given the supreme sacrifice, for we pray that they will never be forgotten. For it is because of them that we are one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all of us. We ask you in the name of your Son, our brother Jesus, for this and for all of our residents to enjoy many of your blessings in this coming year of 2020 and throughout it. Number one in the agenda, let it be peace on earth and goodwill towards men everywhere, and let it begin with each one of us here present. Amen.
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, do we have any corrections to the minutes for the meeting of the 14th? Hearing none, minutes are so approved. We have, actually, we have two presentations this evening. The first will be firefighter of the year award, and then the library will speak to us after that. So, Tony, do you want to take the stage?
I'd like to thank all of you for allowing us to take a few minutes tonight to present this. So, in December of every year, we have our annual awards banquet where we present awards to firefighters, we make promotions, and we kind of give ourselves a pat on the back for a great job that everybody does throughout the year. So, as luck would have it, Noah was out fulfilling his duties serving our country during that weekend, and he was unable to make it. So, he was chosen as our firefighter of the year for 2019. So, Noah, come on up here. And I have a few words to read now. Noah has been a member of the Green Hills Fire Department for almost four years. Very young man, and not long after joining the department, Noah enlisted in the Marine Reserves and completed his basic training. When he returned, he came back to the department and completed his fire and EMS training. Noah works at Colraine in Fairfield Township Fire Departments in addition to serving in Green Hills. He's a lifelong resident of the village, and he has a desire to serve his country as a Marine reservist, and a duty he currently fulfills with a call upon. Noah is also a volunteer firefighter, like his grandfather was in his own town. Currently, Noah is in medic school and working towards a full-time career in the fire service. In his off time, Noah can usually see him in the station doing something, whether washing and detailing apparatus, training, doing chores around the station. It's rare that you see him just sitting around unless, of course, he's studying as a medic student, and they study a lot. Noah is also finishing up ATO training, but he clears an engineer very soon. Noah is one of the run leaders on the department. He made 133 runs last year. Additionally, Noah ended the year as the volunteer who ran the most shifts of anyone over 1,300 hours. That's a lot. That's like a second job, or a third or fourth job. Noah, thank you for your service to the country and for your service to Green Hills. It's my pleasure to recognize you as firefighter of the year. And we got some party. Members of your family are here, so if you'd like to come up and get a picture with Noah, that'd be a good time to do that right now.
Sorry for the delay.
Enjoy it.
It's our favorite form of procrastination.
Good work. Thank you. Congratulations tomorrow if you come around here.
Congratulations to your.
Congratulations.
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 Please do it. Have a good night.
It's okay.
We should have had you go first.
And I wished his grandfather could have been here to see this.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, up next, librarian, Ms. Wyker.
Good, good.
I do have handouts from you all, and enjoy. And I just wanted to take a couple of minutes and give you kind of an update on the facility master plan and the generous support that you all and the accounting gave to the library in 2018. We spent a year with the facilities master plan trying to really get the biggest bang for Art Buck and really get a good plan of what we were going to do. And those are going to build the next generation libraries. And if you've been on our website, you've probably heard all about this. Each branch, and there are 42 locations now in the system, we added a distribution center which helps get our holds there even after now, which is a very exciting new build for us. But we did listen to over 3,000 people through surveys, listening sessions. I saw many of you at ours here who participated in DOT surveys, focus groups, all kinds of things. And then we synthesized that with the help of Group Four and a number of other consultants who worked at the library. And the plan has come to fruition and is available on sensasylibrary.org/nextgenerationlibrary. So, all of this is available, and I just printed off a very quick highlight that focuses on Green Hills itself. And we sort of divided the 42 locations into planning regions for moving forward. And we're in the central north one, and so we're kind of looking at it as a system-wide approach because you can't, you know, 42 locations, we can't be all things to all people all the time. The bottom, bottom line, though, is that there are no closures, no consolidations. We have a three-year lease, and we're going to be right where we have been for the last three years, continuing to work with Green Hills. In the summary there, you'll see that we serve about 3,500 residents, and primarily here in Green Hills. The numbers, they were like, wow, people really don't come in or go out. And it's like, yeah, it's a small town in the middle of... And it works the way that the planners designed it too, in the community and the WPA. So, that was very exciting. We're what is called a focused library. So, a lot of feedback came back that not everybody wants a 25,000-square-foot big destination library to be also, they have the little neighborhood branch where they can come in, see everything, make sure of what's going on, be able to see their kids, and be able to have just that neighborhood feel and grab their holds, attend a program. But it doesn't have to be also, you know, the other ones will be very nice. And if you look at it, the region, Forest Park, is actually going to be one of the big next-generation libraries, which is like the new ones that we're going to be building. All of this is, we looked at it for 10 years, because that's the length of the levy. And we also, we haven't ever really done this before, and we kind of discovered that while 10 years is what we have, that's not going to cover what we really need. So, we're looking at it for 10 years, but this is a living document, and things may shift around as we go along. It's meant to be a kind of a roadmap to help us decide where we're going and how best to spend our money each year, because we can't do all of it all at one time. And it doesn't sound like a lot, but 10 years seems to go awful fast. I still can't believe, you know, it's the Green Hills Library for six, so it's gone. But we aren't going anywhere, and we're going to be right here to help you guys. There are 26 locations that are getting something called a strategic investment. That is above and beyond capital maintenance or other, you know, facility projects. That's a bonus thing. I believe our reading branch may have already gotten a laptop kiosk, which expands their computer services a great deal in that location. So, each one will be tailored to the branch that's getting it. The thing is, we don't know exactly what that looks like yet. So, we're going to be taking any feedback anybody has about that, but we're also going to be working through that process. They are hoping to move forward on those in the next few years rather than waiting until the end of the 10-year period, but it probably isn't going to be next week either. So, we will be improving. We don't know exactly how quite yet, so if you have some nifty ideas. We certainly have all of the feedback that was provided in those listening sessions, and that's summarized on that two-page document. Each branch and location has a two-page summary like that as well as the regional overview. So, I just wanted to say thank you again for your support over the years, and that we're continuing to move forward with it. If anyone has further questions about the facility master plan or how that's going to impact Green Hills, I would be happy to talk to you. I can also bring on Justin Rampa, who you also worked with in the listening session. So, just wanted to say thank you again for all of your participation, and I did want to hit just maybe two other things really fast. Does anyone have any questions about the facility master plan that I could answer right now? We're also starting something called the Winter Checkout Challenge, and I brought my swag to show off. We are doing this from now until, it started a couple of weeks ago, but it will run until the end of February. So, you can do this completely from home, or you can stop in and see us. If you stop in and see us, you can get a tote bag. When you sign up, you get the tote bag. We give you a bookmark, and you can mark off, just like for the summer reading book, only this is in the winter, and this is only for adults. This isn't for the kiddos, this is meant for adults only. And we have four different tracks where you can do audiobooks, you can do print books, you can do movies, you can do do-it-yourself craft kinds of things. So, you can check out any of our online resources, download a book, come in and pick something out. If you are going, I don't know how to participate, come in. I have an entire container full of ideas. You can draw a slip out of the hat when you stop in for your swag. So, this is an exciting new thing that the library has never done before, and we're really excited about it. And I'm not certain if I mentioned it to this group, I tried to promote it in the Green Hills Journal. We are offering an after-school meal from 3:30 to 4:30, Monday through Friday, through the entire school year, even through breaks. UMC is partnering with the library to provide this at a number of our locations. So, anybody who is 18 or younger and wants to stop into the library, Green Hills, for 3:30 to 4:30, we have food. Please stop in and get your snack. And I just wanted to try and spread that as much as we possibly can. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Do you want to show the camera of that bag?
Yes.
It's over there.
It is going to be a clock.
Also, has it been put in the journal, this new program, the winter program?
Yes, it was mentioned briefly at the beginning of January, and I'll put more in in February just to kind of keep it going. We do have a Ohio River Floods Program, which is presented by the docents of the Sensasyl Museum Center, and that's going to be on Monday, February 3rd at 6:30. We're having an art day for Alma Thomas, and that's going to be on Saturday, I'm sorry, February 8th at 10:00 a.m., and that's for kids. And sign up is required for that one, so we make sure we have enough supplies for everyone. And we're also doing a cards for troops. Anybody can come in the week of February 17th through the 22nd, from 3:00 to 5:00. We'll have card-making supplies out, so kids can make cards to send to someone overseas or serving here in the U.S. I'm not sure where they'll wind up, but we're looking forward to being able to celebrate our service people. And then also, a hot chocolate mix is for our teens, lest people think that we don't have anything for the teenagers besides the food. We do, although this is sort of food-related, because they'll be able to customize a hot chocolate mix, and that's on Wednesday, February 12th at 3:00.
Thank you.
And I have an entire calendar of other events. Welcome to check out online or stuff, and we'll be happy to get you up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Citizens to address council, this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council. When recognized, please come forward to the lecturn, give your name and address, then state your comments or questions. This is not intended to be a dialogue with council or village staff. If you have questions, the questions will be recorded and referred to the manager's office for response. This will allow time for thoughtful and thorough consideration to be given to each question. Council meetings are recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to three minutes. Speakers may not yield any or all of their time to other speakers. We have anybody that wants to talk?
I'm Beth Bolsey. I live at 108 Burley Circle. I just want to make a suggestion about the historical district, the committee. I'd like to suggest that people would be elected and that they have to live in a historic district in order to be on the committee.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, reports of village officials, municipal manager, Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. Forget that sometime. Okay, first I want to address an item that's on your agenda tonight, and that's the contract with Welsh Construction. They were the low bidder for the Winston Road project, and we actually had, I think, eight different bidders. So, it was a good competition. They were all relatively close, but these folks were the lowest. Just to let you know, the traffic signals, the full project cost is $1,354,000, but $405,000 of that is the Water Works project. So, that takes it a little bit closer to what we originally intended. So, we're about in the $900,000 category. About $744,000 of that is our loan from the Ohio Public Works Commission, and the rest will make up with our street maintenance money and municipal road fund money from the county. Then Water Works, of course, will send us a check for their portion of the project. Any questions on that? It's pretty...
When will they start?
Oh, I know.
And do they promise not to take as long as they've taken on other sections of Winston Road?
Well, our sections went well. I'm sure we'll be quicker than south of our border, but I don't have a pre-construction date yet, but they know we are anxious to start. So, as soon as I can tell them that the contract has been signed, we'll push to get a date, get it going. So, the longer wait it, right? Okay, a couple other things. The Precision Concrete Cutting Company, say that real fast. They were actually out, they were able to start yesterday. You know, weather's always an issue, but they got through 35 different sidewalk blocks. I know the mayor's looked at some. I've only looked at a little. Mike's looked at a number of them, and we're pretty happy with what we're seeing. So, I think this is going to be a way to go, and we will be talking about this at an upcoming meeting. I'm sure it's streets and services on the get the sidewalk program going again. We had a really good meeting last week. Beth was there for the local historic district. It was just great to see so many citizens come out. They've obviously read their materials, they had their questions, and that's always a good feeling when, you know, your audience is interested. So, I appreciate their effort. Our consultant is putting their comments, they're tweaking those guidelines a little bit more, and there'll be another set, as well as a survey that's up on the website. And I'm still waiting on a date, her timeframe, on when she thinks she'll have something for council. So, I'll let you know as soon as I hear anything on that. Share mode cleanup that started today. This is where the service department had rented that really cool piece of equipment that grinds all that back to get us a nicer space. And then Grounds Pro is working to take out all the roots, the stomps, and rough it up and plant grass seeds, so it'll be grassed and look a lot better in the future. So, pretty excited about how that will look. Also, I have set up two public meetings for the new plans that we have for the park. I wanted to give the folks that live along Gambier and Ingram, since they actually abut that section, to come in and see them and ask any questions, and maybe they have some thoughts, things like that. So, I'm, one is kind of by reservation, if you live on one of those two streets, and then the other one will be open to any resident later in March that either if anybody couldn't make it, or anybody who has an interest in that property can come and take a look at it. It's really just to get comments at this point in time, to raise awareness. And then the other reminder is that we are, it's hard to believe, in going into our fifth year of our Ronkey contract. So, this is our, this will be our final increase. There's a 40-cent increase per unit per month, and then we will be going out to bid. That's effective March 1st, and then we go out to bid later in this year. I did have a chance to talk to a couple people about where garbage collection and recycling's going. Recycling, I guess the market has gone down quite a bit for buying the recycling goods, so that's a little bit more expensive, but vendors intend to stay, and what we've been working with is Ronkey, they intend to stay in the business of recycling. So, we may see the recycling portion go up a little bit, but overall, they're not seeing drastic increases in, you know, the combination waste and recycling. So, we'll see what we get. We do that with, I think, five or six other communities, which usually helps our price considerably. So, that's what I have for now.
That is through the Center for Local Government Consortium?
Yes, yes, one of the two. Right, we were the first.
Okay, comments, questions?
I just wanted to say that I saw in the website that the information for the diminished amount of whatever for the sewage bill.
Right.
And what needed to be done and all that. I really appreciate that.
Sure.
And also, I thought there were some really, really good questions on that, any, the National Historic District. I think some good points were brought up. It's probably really tough for Beth to catch all of it when she's preparing it, so that kind of feedback I found very, very helpful. You know, things about the garage door that came up and some of the specifics. But wanted to thank everybody that came out and participated and had a positive outlook about how it could benefit both the village and them as residents, so it was good.
May I add something to that? Yes, I was very content on the fact that some of the things were already incorporated on the slides or in the notes and all that. Many things have not been yet put in, even though it was discussed at those meetings. So, I'm concerned with that. Together with that, I got a letter in the mail today of all the different concerns that they have, that they have not been addressed or answered back. So, I'm going to give, at some point, if the mayor would like to have the name, I'm at liberty to give you the name, but not at this time. I have to ask. And then, this has nothing to concern with that, but in the situation of receiving responses back, they say that one of our questions was presented in September 19, 2009, never received answer, January the 25th, 2017, no answer. September 2019, no answer. Then the guidelines for section alterations. In self, had to return a refrigerator because it couldn't come through the door. And more of the appliances that are being more modernized, and they're larger in size, he's very concerned that some of the situations with the size of the door is not only just concerning ADA for a wheelchair to go through, but also causing a problem with owners with that. Also, there were some really good suggestions in here, which I also brought up, and I just want to repeat this. He had a question about the location of solar panels, and that was not addressed to that. The question of the door width because of the modern appliances, it seems to be a problem. High cost of maintenance and the value of the appreciation or not of the house value. His concern of the situation with increases on expenses. We're having a levy coming on for March 17th for operational levy for Winter Woods, and it's just adding more and more to the expenditure that they are looking because they're two retired people, and the income is fixed. Also, wanted to address the suggestion, and I think this is a good one. Lastly, for the municipal manager, may get some benefit of having an ad hoc steering committee selected from the community. And cited there are two people that are in construction that were here to ask the questions and talk about it, plus there are other members of the village that also are in construction, and they might be a tremendous asset to give some input on that situation. And he also touched the point of the concern that Mrs. Bolsey brought up about the area of where some of us, where we're going to vote on it, that we don't live on the area and so forth, also from the planning commission. And also, he suggested that we have some kind of a new draw for that particular group of people that had, that would give such an impact to the one area only of doing the roofs and doing the windows or not doing the windows, or doing the doors or not doing the doors and so forth, or someone that would be more involved into the situation because it pertained to themselves. And then in private, I will make a phone call and see if I'm allowed to give the name, but right now I can just give you the notes if that's okay for you.
Okay. Well, we'll give it to Yvonne. She's the one working with the...
But it really caused me dismay to think that so many times have been addressed, or, you know, and it was probably before you, 2009, I don't know, that was before you.
Jane was here then.
That we had, that we had, he had been trying to get answers, and there are the questions in bullets, all the questions that he had asked throughout those memos that he had sent, and there was never an answer. So, this time he says, I just, I didn't want to go. I invited him to come here for it, and he says, I don't know, I just, I don't know. So, I decided to send you a letter and hope that you would just run with that ball, and that's what I did. But I, every bullet point is a question that he has ever asked throughout those years.
One thing I think we should make clear, and it was clear that evening, is hardship cases, if it's a financial burden not bearable by those in the district, there's an outlet for that kind of thing. So, you know, so when you mention their circumstance, I think it's important to not forget that there is built-in safeguards to not put somebody in distress.
Yeah, but I believe that...
There's no but.
I know.
If someone's got an issue, then a financial hardship, then they have a way of dealing with it. And that's, you know, that covers a lot of territory. So, I'm sure it'll have to be handled case by case kind of thing. I think one of the things I noticed and hoped for, there was, you know, at least one participant that was coming more for, I think, a fight than a conversation, but one of the things I hope for is this, we're here to serve the community. This is to serve the community. We have to balance between, you know, current residents and future residents, and also respecting what we have here as equity, and we should be really on the same page. We want to improve property values, make this even a better place to live. This is a benefit. It's hard to find benefits. This is one that hardly any other community has. We should really maximize that. I'll cover a little bit of that in my report. So, we should be looking at it as we are on the same side. We're not looking to make people's lives difficult and have no care. That's not appropriate.
Well, I think what, you read the rest of that, I think what he would like more of that statement to be in a paper, that it would be...
Well, I mean, it's almost like any law. You're never going to have enough laws for every circumstance, and we just have to make sure the principles on what we're building this on are sound. And I think everybody's desire is to do that, to make it fair and balanced without having to explain every little detail. And it's, a lot of it's going to come down to the spirit of how it's implemented, too. I would just like to assure people that our purpose is to make this a great community and not trying to do any... and not trying to do anybody in. That's not correct.
Absolutely.
And we can, you know, once it gets presented to council, then we can add, take away, whatever, to do it. They did, she did talk a little bit about solar panels, and I think the, in that meeting, I came away thinking, to the rear, just like solar microwave dishes and that sort of thing should be on the rear side of the roof. And one thing that they're doing now is you can get solar roofing that's not panels, but looks like shingles. So, you could have that on your roof on any side.
And also, she did, we, it was a great conversation. I thought there was a lot of give and take, some a little bit heated, but I thought it was a great conversation starter. But the ADA accessibility is obviously, that happens. And I know, I want to, my town home is over there, and I remember when I got a couch, I couldn't get it in the front door, I couldn't get it in the back door. I had recently had my windows replaced, and my now husband, I looked at him, I was like, "Let's just take the windows out." He's like, "You can't take the windows out." I was like, "Oh, yes, you can." So, my big front windows, I took out the three separate pieces, put them to the side, and we brought the couch through the window. So, I do know it's a headache, because I was afraid we were going to have a whole friend situation and pivot, pivot, but luckily, we were able to get it through the window. So, I know, but then I'm looking at the restrictions, and I'm like, "Okay, would my windows have been allowed?" You know, so there's still some questions about some of the stuff that was mentioned, and they mentioned types of styles, and without seeing examples, I don't know what those mean. You know, when they mention not having muttons in the interior, I, I'm not, that's not my field. I don't know what that means. So, sometimes, maybe when they present to us, having some visuals might be helpful for me.
Well, there was quite a few, when they showed the shingle, the shutters and everything else like that.
Yes, there were some, but I'm more visual.
I thought it was pretty thorough.
I thought there was a lot of information, so I think it would have been hard-
To cover it all.
-to cover it all. So, I remember just being a little bit out of my depth about what certain things were. Like, I know some of the terminology for shingles. I couldn't tell you what a slate shingle looked like, so...
Looks like a regular shingle, but just one piece of it.
I've got a few in my yard that blow off my roof.
Very handled, thank you.
Doesn't your building have a slate?
I don't think it does anymore. I don't remember.
All right, moving on. Law Director's Report, Jeff Forbes.
Thank you, Mayor. I know you've got a copy of my written report in your packet, so I won't belabor that, but I think what you will see coming up, now that we're through the holidays and that the General Assembly is back in Columbus, I'm sure they're going to have something cooking up there that will be of relevance to us. So, that's really it for a legislative update. As far as the pending legal matters, I think all of you are aware of this by now, but but we'll repeat it anyway. Your last remaining piece of litigation, the state court case of And One versus the Village of Green Hills. Not, just as a brief recap, you'll remember, we got that case dismissed at the trial court. It was appealed to the appellate level. We won at the Court of Appeals, and the appellant then tried to take that case to the Ohio Supreme Court. Recently, the Ohio Supreme Court gave their decision and said, "We're not interested, we're not going to hear it." So, I think at this point, we can say that case has reached its conclusion. And with that, you don't have any pending lawsuits right now. Well, you know, I mean, for me, let's, we have to knock on wood. So, with that, that would end your pending legal matters, and that ends my report.
I do have a question for you. I don't know what you, if you have come across this, or is that part of your information? But I've been hearing a lot about the State Department of Education going to be giving out grants for students that are on problem areas to go to private schools. And what I read was on the amount of $6,000 per eighth grade to 12th grade, but it was going to be not coming out of the state itself, but it was going to be taken away from the amount of money given to the school system. And a lot of school systems are included in that, and they are, they're feeling that it will break down the public school system. And I don't know if that has been debated yet, or if you know anything about it. And for the underclassmen, for the K through, through six, or through seven, I forget what that was, what I saw, then it's $3,000, and they will take the money to go to any private school they would like. But the actual money would be coming out of the system that is losing the student. So, it's going to be a, if that comes to pass, it could be fairly disastrous.
I am not familiar with it. I don't represent any school districts.
Okay.
So, I can't speak to it. I'm happy to look into it, and I can report back on it.
Please, that would be, that would be nice to know.
And I believe there's a case in front of the Supreme Court about Iowa, something similar, where they had something, but then they wouldn't allow any of the money to go to a religious school because of separation of church and state, so I'm hoping Ohio will let play out-
The vocabulary that came out was private. Didn't say anything about religious.
Right, but the one that I believe is at the Supreme Court is, has some connotations like that state money couldn't go to a religious school, so I think, I'm hoping Ohio would wait to see how-
How that happens.
-that plays out before they would go any further.
We'll check into it.
I appreciate that, yeah, thank you.
The one Senate Bill 206 kind of caught my eye, in particular, the non-resident municipal tax credit. You know, as I get into my report, we're benefiting from a lot of construction payroll currently, and, you know, something like that would be a killer. And, you know, now, I would imagine that would involve also anybody working within the village who doesn't live in the village, so I mean-
Right, I think that's the intent. This concept has been discussed before, and it's never gotten enough traction to get through, so, but you're, but you're right. It's been introduced again, and it's there, and we'll-
It is my understanding that people who work here also use the services that we provide, our roads, for example?
Well, it would really kill places like Blue Age, City of Cincinnati-
Oh, wow.
Ones where they have all that employment.
Right. I'm not saying it's a wise bill. I just report on the bills that may have municipal impact.
Okay. Clerk of Council, Vanessa Roberts. Anything to report? Chief of Police, Neil Furtman.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. We had a visitor stop in. It was probably our best holiday visitor of the year. She's a Green Hills resident. Her name is Arlene Donakowski. She lives in the I section, and she is a member of the Blanket Ministry at the Vineyard Church in nearby Springdale. And she brought us probably a dozen or more handmade blankets that she and her colleagues made up for distribution to those in need, particularly little ones in times of discomfort. She also brought in, she and her friends go to different outlets and different sales, and then they clean up little stuffed animals, and so she brought us several bags of those, and we have stocked our cruisers with those, and we'll be giving those out in situations such as traffic accidents and other situations that cause a lot of distress, especially our little ones. We're very pleased to announce that we are moving forward and have a date set for our teen academy. This was an idea that came from our municipal manager. She saw an article about it, forwarded it to me. I sat down with the Forest Park Police Chief and the School Superintendent. We were all excited together and came up with a curriculum that will involve not only kids that the school resource officer and teachers are seeing as possibly at risk, but also kids that are interested in law enforcement as a vocation. And we want to bring them together. There will be an after-school program that will run from March the 10th to April the 21st, from 3:30 until 5:30. Our initial outing will target 10th and 11th graders, so will be involving some of the younger high school kids. We'll be providing transportation to those that need it home. There'll be food served at all of the meetings. It'll run from, as I said, 3:30 until 5:30. We'll do all kinds of simulations, including, as past members of our Citizens Police Academy can attest to, the Pursuit Simulator and the shooting simulations are a lot of fun. As a matter of fact, two of our CPA alumni are on the brochure that went out on the Teen Academy, and you were hard at work avoiding Pursuit, both of them. So, at any rate, we'll tour their communication center down the street and take a look at a law enforcement helicopter. So, I think it's going to be a very exciting time. I, my fervent hope is that there's one or two kids that really don't have the kind of guidance they need in their lives right now.
And they would find it.
They may be, grow up to be policemen, firemen, doctors, lawyers, teachers, whatever the case might be, but a productive citizen. So, we're very, very excited. Anybody that might be listening, please give us a call at the Green Hills Police Department, 825-2101, or at the Forest Park Police Department, 595-5220. We're very excited that this is finally coming to pass. We are busy working on a number of year-end reports, including our annual report. As a Calea accredited agency, we have a lot of reports that are required of us, so we're busy documenting and getting those reports completed. Speaking of reports, during the last full month in December, the department investigated eight accidents, five crimes, 497 other incidents. We had 718 contacts with citizens, 315 of those were dispatched, and 403 were self-initiated by our officers. We provided assistance to the public in 169 instances. We assisted other agencies 106 times, made 20 criminal arrests, and 46 traffic arrests. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions? The Mayor's Report, I have court receipts for the month of November and December. November's total was, to the state of Ohio, $1,783.50. Hamilton County, $67.50. In the Village of Green Hills, $9,129.30 for the month of December. State of Ohio got $1,182.50. Hamilton County got $37.50. In the Village of Green Hills, $6,557.77. Can we get 77 cents in there? And you may have already gotten your major award, if you had a nice holiday Christmas decorations up, and so if you haven't gotten it, maybe you didn't have your lights on when we went by, or we haven't, not everybody's passed out all the awards yet.
Sorry. I haven't either. I'm a warm climate person.
And that's all I have.
And I'm pregnant.
And if anybody feels they deserve a award, let me know, and I'll give you one. Okay, moving on. Recreation Cable TV, Natasha Metz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a meeting with Waycross in December, and I just want to point out that they are very active in the community. They're doing a lot of great things. Just touch on a few things that they've covered. They had a project-based learning program with the Witten Woods Elementary students, where they had over 140 kids participate in a PSA on natural disasters. They covered the election live talks. They had their 20th anniversary of Talking with Santa Live, which is always a great thing. They had kids on set live. They won two Philo Awards, one for Witten Woods Regional Final in 2018, and one for Forest Park Jazz in the Park, and that was across a board of about 60 competitors from Michigan, Ohio, Kentucky, and Indiana, so they're doing really great there. And if there's anything that you need as far as, you know, making your own project or developing some sort of production, or even giving them ideas for an event that they can come and tape or be a part of, you can contact me, and I'll get you in touch with them from there. And then Recreation, we worked on the schedule of events for the year. Have we gotten that out yet, Yvonne?
No, still waiting on a couple. So, I may actually put it out with something that just says, "To be determined."
Okay, all right, sounds good. So, that should be out soon to see what's going on in the village.
All right. In our Governmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, Maria Walter.
We are going to have a meeting on February the 11th at 6 o'clock, and my co-chair will have her meeting of safety on the same day, but at 6:30.
5:30.
5:30, I'm sorry.
Other direction.
5:30, okay. And that's all I have for that.
All right. Services and Streets, Jennifer Osmangablu.
Just say it really fast.
Yeah.
Getting better.
We're scheduling a meeting for next week.
Well, we might move it back, back a week, if we can. We can pick up finance at the same time.
Oh, sure, sure. So, we'll have a meeting sometime. In February. Yeah, in February.
In February.
The main point of business is the revision, those are the rules and regulations of the Hamilton County Stormwater District, and I emailed that to everyone, what they, the regulations that they want to revise, and we'll go over that because that needs to come to legislation next month. So, that's the main point of business. That's it.
Community Development, Jeff Holder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met on January 14th. Some of the things that were discussed are priorities as a committee for 2020. We also talked about promoting our National Historic Designation and how we can get the most out of that and draw people to the community to visit or live. We, it's nice to have that new signage up for the National Historic District. Signage has gone up. I think it looks really nice. I'm a little bit biased, but- And then another thing that we put together, or at least I put together and is under review, is a mission statement for our committee. Find it helpful to really zero in on what we're supposed to be accomplishing and use it as a tool to measure whether we're doing that or not. So, once that's finalized, I'll bring it to everyone to, my next report, to hear where we've landed on that. We set up our schedule for the year. Got a very proactive co-chair, thank you. So, our meetings coming up will be, and I'll get specific on times later, April 28th, July 28th, and October 27th. And that concludes my report.
All right. Safety, Melanie Hermes.
We are meeting before our next work session Tuesday, February 11th at 5:30. And then, so any safety concerns, please let me know, let the chiefs know, they're usually in attendance. So, thank you to Chief Furtman for everything he does and everything your group does, and thanks especially to the Volunteer Fire Department. That was a lovely ceremony earlier at this meeting, so we are lucky.
Finance and Senate, Jack Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel at your place is Sedana. Are the December 2019 monthly recap provides, which this month provides us a snapshot of what we can look forward to for the year-end reports being prepared by the Finance Director. Overall, 2019 shows good improvement over 2018. The driving force behind this improvement is a 9.13% increase in income tax revenues, representing nearly $110,000 and more in income tax revenue collected in 2019 versus 2018. The total general fund revenues were up nearly 3%, right around $60,000 for the year, totaling $2,384,318. The year-end general fund balance, after expenses, increased by $204,905 year-to-year, with a total remaining at year-end of $1,421,638. At the same time, we maintain lower-than-expected expenses by nearly $100,000 in 2019 over 2018, by only expending approximately 85% of the funds that council had appropriated for 2019. All of this is good news. All of this needs to be balanced, though, on a couple of issues. The ongoing school construction payroll taxes will wind down, which we've been benefiting from, to a different level sometime in 2021, and will need to adjust to the new norm, which will be more school staff payrolls coming on at that time. The other highlight is in 2019 is the first full year of the police levy increase and its effects on budgets and transfers. And finally, as we gear up for Witten Road Phase Three, we'll need to watch carefully how these one-time funds change or not change the improvements in the financial picture we're seeing. I expect we'll get into much greater detail on this with the Finance Director on our financials at the council retreat, whenever we do finance, date for that. Later, I'll present a resolution for some of the usual beginning-of-the-year transfers from general fund to specific accounts based upon appropriations for 2020 that we passed in December. And as we will have a finance meeting coming up in February as well. That's the end of my report. Are there any questions?
All right. We have no old business, or unfinished business. The new business, we have a Resolution 2020-03-F, Resolution Making Supplemental Appropriations and Transfers. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2020-03-F, Resolution Making Supplemental Appropriations and Transfers. Whereas the 2020 annual appropriations were adopted on December 10th, 2019, are to be amended, and whereas appropriations must not exceed total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code Section 5705.36A5, therefore, an amended certificate of estimated resources has been requested by the County Budget Commission. And now, therefore, be resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section One. Since certain actions are needed and money is appropriated to permit the Village of Green Hills to meet its financial obligations for the year 2020, the following items of expenditure are to supplement the appropriations for expenditure for the year 2020. None. And Section Two, that the following transfers of funds be made previously appropriated monies. From General Fund 1,000 to Police Fund 2901, amount $299,000. From General Fund 1,000 to Swimming Pool Fund 2909, in the amount of $89,000. And finally, General Fund 1,000 to Non-Voted Debt Service Fund Number 3901, in the amount of $199,300. Section Three, that this resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move for the adoption of this resolution.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? There ain't none. Clerk call the roll.
Halter?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Osmenoglu?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Okay. Resolution 2020-03-F passes. Next item is Resolution 202004-SNS, Resolution Authorizing Municipal Manager to Execute in Agreement with Welsh Construction Company for the Witten Road Improvement Project. Osmanabloo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 2020-R4-SNS, Authorizing the Municipal Manager to Execute in Agreement with Welsh Excavation Company for the Witten Road Improvement Project. Whereas, following a competitive bid process, the lowest and best bid was submitted by the Welsh Excavation Company. And whereas, the Village of Green Hills desires to enter into a contract with Welsh Excavation Company for the Witten Road Improvement Project with the water main portion of the project being paid for by the Greater Cincinnati Waterworks in the amount of $405,824.50. Now, therefore, be resolved by the Council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section One, that the municipal manager is hereby authorized to execute in agreement with Welsh Excavation Company. Section Two, that the Finance Director is authorized to make payments to Welsh Excavation Company in the amount of $1,354,830.14, unless said amount is otherwise changed through the proper execution of change orders. Section Three, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt this resolution.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I have a question. Is that number in blood, or it might be oscillating?
What, the total amount?
The total amount.
It can change because of change orders.
And how much of that change has the village manager power to absorb without coming to council and we having to vote again?
I don't know, 10% maybe?
Okay. I don't know. If there's a percentage, I think if it was sizable for us, I would come to council. But in this particular project, there's a portion of it, the waterworks, that we, we're contracting for, but they're overseeing it. And I don't know what.
And they will be paying for that, then?
They'd be their portion, yes.
Okay, so this.
Third or fourth time we've worked with the waterworks on a project like this.
Okay.
They always reimburse us whatever.
Whatever it is, okay.
Yeah. And, of course, this is a project we've worked long and hard to get completed.
Yeah.
So hopefully, hopefully it'll be done. And of course, it's a different company that did the work south of us.
Okay.
Hopefully, they'll move fast.
One other question. We had talked about the median strip. Is that a regular end? Is that, you're looking into that, right, to see if that's going to, because I think that would be a nice addition, really add a lot of character. Plus, I don't know if anybody saw, Cincinnati had, they're doing a lot on safety and the number of pedestrians that are hit. And they're finding, I think, one of the things that was mentioned, if there's a median strip where they have a landing point halfway, deaths go down. So there's also a safety component besides an aesthetic component to that. So my hope is that that's still in there.
And the way you phrase that, a landings.
My preference is on-your-feet landings.
Yes, right. Okay, Clerk call the roll.
Halter?
Aye.
Osmenoglu?
Aye.
Metz?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Hermes?
Aye.
Halter?
Aye.
Okay, Resolution 2020-04-SNS passes. Everybody get ready. All right, municipal calendar. And we have a safety meeting at 5:30 on the 11th.
Correct. Laws and Rules, and also the 11th at 6:00.
And Finance and SNS to be announced.
To be announced.
Probably on the 11th in the morning.
Okay. And then we need to come up with some dates for our retreat, hopefully. And I know you don't have your calendar, but if we can get maybe three to see, then if Maria can fit that into her calendar to confirm it, then, and we can confirm that at the next work session, too, I guess. You'll be here at the next work session.
Fingers crossed. She determines it, so.
You can bring her.
Also, I want to remind everybody that I'm going to need to receive your input for the retreat of council, because it's my job this time to put it together. And then I also would like to have a time with you that we could confirm that before it's set, okay?
So I'm guessing sometime in probably April, the month of April, or the month of May.
For the.
For the retreat.
Retreat. You will send us dates available, or what?
Well, what do you want to do? Do we want to?
I think you're the one that's the bottleneck, right?
Okay.
I was as well.
I was as well.
Okay.
So there's a couple dates that I can't do in April as well.
Okay.
Okay, so send me some dates. I'll have Yvonne.
On April and May.
On April and May.
I was going to say, why don't we all.
And then I'll have Yvonne send out.
Why don't we just all send our availability for Saturdays and Sundays in April, May?
We can do this electronically. I can send something out. You check your availability dates, and then we'll go from.
Doodle calendar or something.
Yeah.
All right. Nothing else? Meeting adjourned.